I'm going to read off a list of names, addresses, and amounts. And after I get done, if you're here for any of those properties, that will be your time to speak. Naomi Wilson, 211 North Newton, 10979. James Cox, 105 West Jasper, 5673. Misty Walkup, 401 South Newton, 11831. Troy Caton, 505 South Newton, 7501. Mariluz Gomez, 210 East Union, 8497. Penny Ross, 315 West Union, 12354. Tiffany Hood, 419 West Jasper, 27263. Candace Walcoiak, 121 North Iroquois, 9443. Is there anyone here for any of these properties?
411 West Jasper.
411 West Jasper.
It's not down here.
It's not?
No, this is utility shut-off.
But they said that though.
Okay, hold on. This is for water and sewer?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get to that. Anybody here for these other properties that I just mentioned? Entertained a motion to disconnect?
It's a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unsafe buildings, John.
First one is 129 West Prairie Street. And in January, we got an update on what their lawsuit was like. It's set for hearing on March 25th. There was still some work that needed to be done. The inside of the porch ceiling was falling in, and the screens on the porch still needed work. And it was continued to tonight for a report.
Good evening. Attorney Cody Spear for the estates of Frank and Abdean Burton. The lawsuit's still currently set for hearing on March 25th. I filed for an injunction in that case to prohibit any further interference with getting the repairs done. That has not been ruled upon yet, so I'm still waiting for an answer on the interim. I filed to evict the residents of 129 West Prairie, as well as Mr. Battering, so that way we can hopefully speed that process up. That is currently set for hearing February 20th, so this week. Mr. Battering has sought to continue that. I filed an objection, so my request is standing for an action on the property for another 30 days, come back, and hopefully the eviction will be fruitful, so we can get them out and get the repairs completed.
Was it your testimony last month that your client caused the repairs to be made?
My client caused the roof. There was a police were called during that interaction, and there were threats made regarding additional claims for trespass and whatnot, so that's why we're waiting for a court order, so that way we have full permission to be on the property. But yes, my client caused the roof repairs to be made on the porch.
Okay, so it wasn't Mr. Battering?
Correct.
Okay.
So my client hired Smart Roofing to complete those repairs. Law enforcement was called to try to remove Smart Roofing, but they were successful in getting that completed.
Now, this one here was the one they were supposed to fix, the front porch. The roof was falling in, and all the screens, and they've done that. That's all done. I took care of that this week, or this last week. All the porch is down, cleaned up, all the screens, it does clean up, nothing on the porch, all is done.
I drove by this evening, and it did look like the exterior of the property was a little bit more, they just didn't really get a good look at it, but...
Suggestion, Jed? I'm not sure. So, the hearing on March 25th, is that the eviction hearing, or what is that?
March 25th is the, ultimately, I guess that would be whether or not Mr. Battering has a claim for ownership against it. That should resolve the ultimate issue. The eviction's set for February 20th.
Okay, gotcha.
So I guess under, in light of the information provided, perhaps if we could table this until the next meeting, allow me to confirm repairs were made, just to make sure that everything's up to par. I guess maybe I can get some pictures of it and whatnot, and report back.
I'll make the motion to extend it for another 30 days?
Second.
It's been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have another question on that property. This was on both of those. The one who was asking about them, it says that all three of them got a $500 fine for both. And I just need to know if I've got that fine or not.
It was the fine on June 17th, 2024, was $500 and held in abeyance. And then in July, the UBO was modified to provide 30 additional days, or the fine would be doubled. And in August, the fine was imposed, $1,000. It doubled. So, what, I'm looking here, for each, each for failure to appear. I don't, my, I don't take that kind of notes, so I'm not sure about that.
In August?
He's looking at minutes or something from June 17th, 2024? And Ingrid was here, so I'm reading her notes, but she just wrote down a $500 fine. She didn't say a hundred, or a $500 fine for everybody.
I believe that was the meeting they were pulling.
Out in the hallway.
Pulling their own meeting in front of your office, and did not go to the family meeting.
Yes. I don't believe it was.
Would that be against the owner of record?
It'd have to be against the owner of record, because they're the only people noticed up for the meeting.
So he's not the owner of record?
Not yet.
And I may be speaking out of turn, but I do recall reviewing the minutes and the order from that particular meeting, and there was a, I think, a fine assessed to, I believe it was Marlon Burton, Michael Manis, and Dennis Battering.
Right, that's what I have, $500 each for failure to appear. And then in parentheses, I have that they were out in the hall discussing their own meeting. Jim made the motion, and it was seconded by Tricia.
Is it proper for us to find someone who's not the owner of record?
So, everybody who has an interest in the property gets notice of those UBOs. So, there's a dispute as to whether he's got one, so he's been getting noticed up on these things, whether he's got an interest or not. That's how you do it. In terms of, I mean, the fact that there's some litigation here, and people aren't allowed to do things to that property until a judge decides, may have some bearing, but is it possible to do that? Yes, if he's got an interest in the property. But for instance, like, the Michael Manis, he's just a representative, he doesn't have any property interest. That, it's almost like, it sounds like almost a contempt finding or something that a judge would do for somebody not doing what they were, you know, told to turn over the keys to the house within 10 days, and they don't, so he holds him in contempt and imposes a fine. It shouldn't be like that.
So, you have any advice for us here?
Whatever was done in June, I, the way I read our notes, is it doubled and became a fine of $1,000 on that property in August. And whoever the title owner is in August is going to bear that, because it's a lien on the house. If he's ultimately found to own the house, he's going to have a $1,000 lien on it.
So the whole thing is basically tabled for tonight, and we'll sort it out next month, when we know whose property it is.
That would be after March 25th.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah. So at the April meeting, we'll be able to sort that out.
Right. When we have it in, for abeyance, it is to make, you know, work complete. It sounds like they are working and completing, so...
So on the unsafe building ordinance, from what we had to do at the property, we done? And John went down, look, that's what he's talking about, that porch cleaned up. So this, the unsafe building warrant should be over, right? This is actually the court thing between me and Burton's.
If, if he releases it, and that's an if, I just heard the first thing tonight about anybody finishing the order. I don't know that it's finished or not, that's up to him.
I tried to call him, but I got Jim's phone number.
So, we're coming back in 30 days, but if there's more work to be done, there's going to be a report in 30 days. And John, you should go check it out, and see if the order's been complied with, and it should be released. Releasing it isn't going to do anything for the lien, Dennis.
No, no. Yeah.
So, John, you'll check it out between now and the next meeting?
I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is 321 South James Street. Last month, is anyone here for that?
Yeah.
Okay. You're the new owner?
Yeah.
What's your name?
Moran.
And what's your last name?
Moran.
Spell that, I'm sorry.
M-O-R-A-N.
Okay. So, where, you were informed that there's an unsafe building order?
Yeah.
Because they're required by law to tell you that, so that you'll get a big surprise when you hand over your check?
I wasn't aware, yeah.
Okay. And so we continued the January hearing for 30 days, and I sent you a notice.
Yeah.
And...
And I can send that all the work is being done.
Okay, so we're going to go through these...
I talked to John today, so...
Okay.
Did you get tired of that?
I moved it, yeah.
So...
Just the one that went frozen, I couldn't move it, and just took that.
Clean up junk trash and debris in the yard, is that, John, is that done?
Yep, everything on that list was done.
Yeah.
Oh, so are you ready to, are you asking to release it?
Yeah.
There you are.
Yeah, when we boarded the house, we found out like three windows that need to be replaced, replace those already, and fix the door, the back porch, fix the roof, everything.
I'll make a motion to release.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is 109 West North Street, Tina Terry. In January, John reported that it looked like someone had cleaned up on the east side of the house. A $2,500 fine was imposed, and they were ordered to report back in 30 days. And, I'm looking to see, so they were ordered to exterminate vermin in and about the unsafe premises, remove trash, debris, or fire hazardous material that appears someone cleaned up the east side of the residence, and repair the roof. Was in the order after the January 20th meeting. Is, was somebody here for that one?
No.
Oh.
That's the one that we filed a lien on last week.
Yeah. So it got lien, but they, Tina Terry was, I don't think I've got a green card here. I do not. So we send it, just so you know, we send it regular and certified mail, both, so that if people don't pick up their certified mail, but they may get wind of the hearing and actually show up. So... Are you sure those actions...
They done any work to it, John?
Not, the hole in the roof has not been touched. She has been doing some stuff on the inside of the house, I noticed today. But other than that, I haven't, of course, as far as garments, I don't know what you're going to do with them today unless you trap them.
Yep.
But we don't, we don't have good service, is what you're telling us?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm telling you.
So we could, the only thing we can do then is just basically extend it and get service?
Maybe extend it for 60 days, so that if I don't get a green card in 30 days, I can have Dylan go post it.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is 419 West Jasper Street, Tiffany Hood. Is anyone here for that?
She's not here.
That was also sent certified mail and regular mail on January 31st. It's kind of the same problem. This would be, this may be the first time, that is the first order she's gotten.
Right.
So maybe 60 days, reset it, and serve it in 30 days by Dylan if they don't sign for the green card?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three abandoned cars back behind it, one of the buildings I'm not for sure who they belong to.
It's been moved to second. All in favor?
And the last one is 411 West Jasper Street, and that is Mark Schultz and Stan Burkler? Okay, which one are you?
Mark Schultz.
And, okay, what's the, just so I know, what's the relationship between you and Stan Burkler?
He's my landlord.
Right.
Gotcha. So, this is an unsafe building order. It is the first, the first hearing. And so you and the landlord are responsible for responding to this things in some way. If you're buying it on contract, I can predict what your landlord told you who's responsible, but have you discussed this with the landlord?
Uh, yeah, we actually...
Okay. Do you dispute that this building is unsafe because of exterminate vermin in and about the unsafe premises, remove trash, debris, fire hazardous material in and about the premises, and make repairs to the front of the house to make it compatible in appearance with other buildings in the area? Repair the hanging front screen door, removing trash and debris around the residence, and repairing damaged windows and roof trim? Do you...
I've got all that done, except I got a window to put in.
Okay, wait, one second. So first, we got to get past, do we need to have John testify that those conditions exist, and have them decide whether this is an unsafe building, and then talk about that? Or do you want to admit that this is an unsafe building, and that you've already taken steps to resolve some of it? Okay, so, so you'll find that it's an unsafe building and subject to your jurisdiction. And so, which of the repairs have you done? Let's go through these.
I fixed the screen door, I took it off, I took the patio deck off, cleaned up all the debris around, and I've got one window to replace. It's got flexiglass in it, because it was like that when I bought it. And on the east trough, on the side of the house, that needs to be repaired. But I can't get up there on a ladder, because I've got a prosthetic, and I'm afraid I'm going to fall. I've got to find somebody.
We're waiting for a phone call back.
Yeah.
So...
And I know you can't have that much fires, and right now my water was froze. If I turn my water spitting on the outside, if I can run a fire out there and burn all my debris, what I, but I got it stacked right inside the building.
I don't know that we're looking for you to burn your debris.
It's still wood. It's still wood.
Okay, well...
Untreated wood?
What kind of wood is it?
No, it's just regular tuba floors and plywood, and then I've got tree stumps.
Yeah, only rubbish from the yards, trees, limbs, untreated wood. That's it.
Okay. I ain't got no treated, I'm ready.
Okay, so, so go, I'm trying to make a record here. So you took the screen door off, or you repaired it?
No, I took it off, just replaced.
Not replaced, but removed.
Okay. The patio deck, you removed that?
Yes.
The, you've got one window that needs replaced?
Yes.
And the eaves trough needs to be repaired, and you're going to have to track somebody down to do that?
Yes.
And you picked up some trash and debris, or you're...
Yep, I got it all cleaned up, all the debris, all the trash, paper and everything.
So, and what about making the repairs to the front of the house to make it compatible in appearance with other buildings in the area?
We're doing that now.
Okay, what are you doing?
I cleaned it up, I've got it all cleaned up, but I've got a...
What are you doing to the front of the house to make it look like the other houses?
I took my patio deck off.
Yeah, it looks good.
So, maybe, how much more time do you think you need?
Well, right now I'm making on a phone call for, to get my east trough fixed on the side, and I'm going down this coming weekend to get me a window for I can replace the back.
So 30 days?
I'll make a motion to give him 30 days. It's been moved to second. All in favor?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. We're done now.
Yes. So come back in 30 days, though, and report back on these other two items.
Okay. Nice work. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. That's all.
Do you have anything, John?
No, nothing else.
Financials, Tina?
At the end of, at the end of January, in our general, we ended with $438,315.29. In our water operating, we ended up with $64,640.40. Sewer operating, $252,140.59, and it gives us a grand total of $1,935,484.77. And up there in your pile, you have the Union Township fire contract with an email from their trustee, who's more or less saying that they can't do anything this year to raise the price, but if you tell them what you want, then they'll, they could increase it maybe at the next budget, or they've talked to Fowler, and Fowler said they cover it. They wanted just to dismiss it all.
Didn't they tell us the same thing last year?
No.
They didn't? Union Township, and we don't cover all of Union Township. We only cover, what, about half of it?
Probably not even half.
All the way to 600 North in Benton County?
Yeah.
All the way to 600 East to State Route 55.
They're offering, well, the contract is for $2,850. And how many runs do you have out in Union Township?
Twelve a year, maybe.
That catches the dairy.
Yeah, which if you were, if the fire department was billing for that, it'd be a substantial amount of money. That's $2,000, $2,500 to the chief of fire protection.
Yeah, I mean, how much, how much do we, how much do we get from Grant Township?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Thirty-five, I think.
But Grant Township...
It's twice a year, about.
Yeah, twice a year.
But Grant Township, you know, they all buy equipment and trucks, and all kinds of stuff. I don't know that Union Township's ever done that, have they?
No, not since I've been there, I haven't.
And I think we've heard that same excuse for multiple years.
I thought so, too.
Did we just get in too late to October before they set their budgets?
Well, but we tell them, and then...
Then they don't do it.
I think we just had to officially tell them in a letter what do we want it to go to.
If you guys in the chief want to, I'd do it two months ahead of their October budget hearing, and...
Yeah, I think if it's going to be, if it's going to be doing, it needs to be done like in June. Or should we tell them, if they want to go to Fowler, go to Fowler? I mean, it's, I think...
I'm going to say we give them a price, and then they can decide which way they want to go.
So we're going to cover it for another year for this?
I'm assuming, and then send them a letter.
The 911 call probably goes to Benton County, doesn't it?
It's right on the line, John, it just depends on which one it bounces to when they call or the caller is.
Which they've already paid their first half of the year's fee.
So, what do you want it to go to next year?
I mean, is the 20, is it 2,600, is that what that is? Is that by?
I'll let you look at, make sure I'm not reading it improperly. I mean, just the operating budget for the fire department is around close to $40,000. For them to be getting it at $2,850 is cut and cheap.
I think you said there hasn't been a bump in that decade, last time we talked.
Hasn't been a long time.
You can't get pumps certified on trucks for a fraction of the time?
And if they, you know, I think your, the amount of premium you pay for fire protection is dependent upon how far you are from a fire station, isn't it?
Yep, and water storage and...
So if they, if they go with, aren't they going to be increasing the premiums on their constituents substantially?
I think so.
So they probably want to think about that before they...
That's why it's always been screwed.
So did you have a number in mind, Gary?
I think, you know, for a first bump, I'd probably go to $5,000, $2,500 by annual, compared to the 14.
$5,000 total.
Let's write them a letter to that, and...
Does that sound fair, Jed?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Anything else, Tina? Before we go on, let's bump Ken up to the top, he's been sitting here so patiently. In your motion, did you want to approve this for this year?
Approving the fire contract.
The fire contract for this year?
Oh, yes, I would approve it for this year.
Okay. It's been moved to second. All in favor? Okay, Ken.
Town was looking at some unique funding from USDA Agriculture, real gold, to install, to make previous to six lots on North Iroquois Street. And this process started about a year ago, and I can give you a timeline of when we submitted to various agencies for regulatory approvals, environmental reviews. The time it took them to reply, and the time it came back, it certainly, I'm sorry it took so long to get it done, but if you look at the timeline, it's just the process, we had to go through every hoop in the world. So now we're at that point where the environmental is done, and then we're ready to apply, and I talked to Terry Wire. And the way the USDA system works is you apply for a project, they'll put you in a computer, and then once you're in a computer, then they'll want the application form. So I have an application and a resolution, and I'm not sure if John's had a chance to take a look at the resolution.
I did.
Okay.
He's got it.
And then here's the application form.
With the posted on it? Jim?
Here's, here's another one if you want it. And that's the application, and this is a resolution. So if you choose to, if you chose to move forward, pass the resolution and sign the application, and I'll get over to Tina, you can keep the originals, she can see them up to me, I'll get over to Terry. We'll get the process set up, and in the next two to three weeks, we'll submit everything to them. Environmental review package, the forms, the application forms. And then hopefully in the next 30 days or so, we'll see some movement. And then we have the fund, we have the, have the quotes for doing the work from Town and Country, and from Bonds Excavated, and we also have talked to the R E O C, NIPSCO, and Gas Company, and all that, applications, and they gave us prices for that, and we believe the cost would be around $4,000 or $50,000. Could be more, could be less, but that's the most recent quotes they've sent to us. And so if you wanted to move forward, then we would just need an application signature on the SF 424, and a resolution to be passed, we'll submit those to USDA, and we'll put her in here.
USDA is willing to pay you full or portion, or...
They would give you the entire funding amount. I don't know how much grant slash loan they would give you, but they would give you the entire funding amount. And I spoke with her last week, after Mr. Butler reminded me to get going. And I spoke with her last week after, after Mr. Butler reminded me to get going. Sorry about that. And she said, yeah, that's, that's the way it would work. She has a grant loan combination, but, but she said this is only the second time she's had this application come into the state of Indiana. So you're only the second applicant in the state of Indiana to apply for this funding. So it would be a hundred percent, their money coming to you. Whether it would be a hundred percent grant or, or loan, a hundred, fifty percent grant, fifty percent loan, she, she doesn't know yet. They're right at the beginning of their, or the, July is the end of their fiscal year, so they're right in the middle of it.
I thought you were saying that that's an environmental thing, is that?
No, no, I'm sorry. That's the actual application for the funding.
Okay.
The, the environmental is what you had to do upfront. There wasn't any point. There was no point in applying for this until that was done because I'll just kick it back.
Okay.
And then just took, we had to go to USDA Corps of Engineers to figure out if it was an Napa bottom body water up there. Believe it or not, I'm not pretty sure it's not.
Yeah.
We had to wait, go through the process. We had to, we had to go to FFA, Federal Aviation Administration, see if that affected any traffic from Kalaman Airport. So there is just a plethora of things that you can look through to see that. We had to make sure when they were dealing with that kind of agency. So maybe Mr. Musk can make that more efficient. So if you wanted to apply, well, I'll, I'll just get copy, Tina copies, and then I'll get over from her. And then, and then tomorrow we will, we will get everything pushed forward as quickly as possible.
So we'd have to approve the?
Need a mo, need a motion to approve the signing of the application and adopt the resolution.
Second?
I'll make that motion.
Gary made the motion. It's been moved and seconded at all in favor?
Aye.
Hall of Foes?
I will get copies from Tina tomorrow with your permission. I'm sorry to take so much to be done.
Nope, thank you, Ken. Appreciate it.
I believe all three of you have to sign, and then Tina has to attest. I believe Mr. Mars should probably tell you that better than me.
I look at this application.
Well, we got you. If you were doing a comprehensive plan for the town, and then we asked you, hey, by the way, while you're doing that, could you do a parks plan? How much you think that parks plan should cost, just off the top of your head?
It shouldn't cost any more than four thousand dollars, thirty-five hundred maybe. That's what Edmund Baswell would charge you for curpsy. We would do it for free.
Yeah.
But it, it, it shouldn't cost you more than a, than, than, I know curpsy charges three thousand, four thousand dollars. That's where I get that number from, but if they are doing a comprehensive plan, it should probably be for free as part of the job, in my opinion.
Okay.
I'm not sure what that goes, if they're giving you.
We haven't signed any contracts with anybody for that yet, have we? Okay.
You have to do it for it's free, folks.
Well, we may be rethinking that whole thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
You taking bids for the, for it work? You mentioned Vons.
Yeah. We gotta get the funding in line first, but?
Sewer line, water line.
Fire Department.
Since the January council meeting, we've had to fire calls, seven EMS calls. February training was over ladders and using the ladders. Officer's training consisted in incident command and scene management, yearly maintenance of department apparatuses being scheduled. Taking bids right now and putting in another electrical circuit at the fire station for the new radios. All the multiple, there's twenty chargers, and they're above the equipment lockers. And we've decided that's where we want to keep the radios instead of letting the guys take them home. So they don't get lost, stolen, broken, all that good stuff. We're updating some hoses on the rush truck and the pumper. Setting up scheduling for hose testing and pump testing. Three members are currently in fire one and two of Benton County. And two members are currently EMS training here in the county. Lucas device was received from the county and training was provided. It's in service and it's in our first response unit. It's a device that does chest compressions instead of doing yourself. Freezes up our hands, so we've got more hands running AED and airway. It's all good.
Anybody have anything for the fire department?
When you say the radios are staying at the station, that has nothing to do with alerting people in the fire or for a call?
I'm sorry?
That has nothing to do with alerting a firefighter for a call?
No.
Okay.
We've got an eight hundred and fifty dollar pager that does that now.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else for the fire department? Police Department.
We had forty-four calls for service called by county, eleven by us, twenty-one were public service. Six of those were handled by me, by, by the deputies. No aggressively, we took it, four ordinance fines and sixteen ordinance violations total.
Anybody have anything for Dylan? Streets, water and sewer.
Well, this is big, John. Streets, we're still waiting on, we'll know at the end of February if we got an ordinance being crossed again. Ordinances will be at the end of February. They want bids done in March. It's kind of a timeline we're at on streets. On sewer, we're still discharging at the sewer plant now that all the monitoring equipment's fixed. We will be utilizing the new chemical feed system starting at the end of March. Disinfection season is April first, so we'll be firing that up a couple of weeks prior. We're moving forward with overhauling both the Wayland Street and Union Street lift stations. Their way overdue, the, the metal pipes that go into concrete structures are split, deteriorated on both lift stations. So bad that the lift station on Wayland, if anybody drives by, they'll see a pipe coming out of the pump pit and going into the next pit. That is a bypass because the lift station is not functional without that. F J M Services has given us quotes on both. They can complete the work. They're the ones that have it mandated right now to, to work. That alarm on Wayland will be going off periodically. I've silenced it twice today already. Just something that's gonna happen until we get a repair. They're just waiting for good weather. On the water side, we had a four-inch main break in the area of West Prairie and South Newton Streets. We were able to repair that with the help of AccuDig. We did excavate, cut through and excavate ourselves. Only to find out we had a gas line, service line conflict right on top of the break. Instead of chancing that with the backhoe bucket, I called for hydroexcavator. They were there roughly thirty minutes and had the rest of it out so we could complete the repair. We'll have that patched in along with any others when we do the community crossing paving project. On parks, Yoder Hall Drainage is submitting a quote to finish the sewer project at the park, at Foster Park. For the buildings, they do not think open cutting that will affect that tree. They said they've done it a lot. We're only going through one side. Those roots are hundreds of feet long and out. They don't think it's gonna be a problem, and that's the most cost-effective thing for us to do. I've given them the okay just to submit a quote for the time being. And they're also gonna be submitting a quote for the water line, sewer line project at the ballfields. We are not moving all of the sewer line. We will be replacing all of the water line. We will move the sewer to not be, for the most part, under any concrete that's gonna be poured up there. We'll also be obtaining quotes from whichever paving company gets our community crossing grant bid for the ballfield parking lot. That's something that you guys are wanting done, correct? To at least have a price on it?
I think it's just, we can do the whole thing, but an area for handicap parking, just a smaller.
And Wiseman Tree Service has completed all tree removal around the pond and the waterway next to the pond, including the waterway going from the water tower to South Newton Street. That's all good. I do have one more thing. I did not put on the agenda. I didn't get a chance to talk to Ken about it before he left tonight. I do want to have him get some numbers together for, I told you guys last year I would like to do a fire hydrant project. I want to get some numbers together on what we're looking at cost-wise. We have thirty-plus hydrants that need replaced, needed replaced years ago, and they need to be replaced now. If we don't have an open grant for that, which we shouldn't have any projects open, I'd like to see what we can get for a fire hydrant project. Replace them with all good. That's all good.
Anybody have anything for Dustin? Attorney?
I gave you a marked up curpsy lease. That was difficult to follow, what they were, what they were saying in their original version, because the dates were messed up on. When it began and when it ended and when they paid their rent, and so I tried to clean that up, but and I didn't really change the terms of their lease. Their lease was fine with a few tweaks, but that's not where your rent was. And I don't know how important that is.
There's two of them.
Right, and we have, the daycare has not paid any rent this year.
But curpsy has?
Curpsy's paid for January and February.
Did they pay eleven hundred and fifteen hundred?
They paid a total of twenty-two hundred, so eleven hundred for January, eleven hundred for February.
Maybe that's what they meant to say in their lease. I couldn't follow what they were talking about.
But see, we need another one for the daycare. We need another lease for daycare. That's why the mountain didn't, isn't high enough for what it used to be.
Right, because Bright Steps was to pay the other portion of it. Because the town was taking over all utilities.
Well, that's in, in this, is that you pay, you pay curpsy's utilities?
Right, we are.
Okay.
Yes.
I just had a question of whether it was separately metered or not. I don't know.
It is.
So on the other, the daycare, what do they, I mean, what are the terms supposed to be? The same, like rent is eleven hundred dollars a month until the end of February, and then it goes up to fifteen hundred dollars a month? Which is what curpsy's lease says? Or?
We told daycare, we told the daycare that they could
Pay what they were paying.
Pay what they were paying for the year, and then I think we were gonna do the reevaluation at the end of the year.
Is, is that the lease that we signed in April of twenty twenty-three, or this was prepared in April of twenty twenty-three that talked about?
See, I think right now, today, curpsy paid it all and the daycare paid the curpsy. So that's, it used to be that way. We got all of our money from curpsy and the daycare paid curpsy.
So according to the daycare, they were giving curpsy nine hundred dollars a month. And then in turn, curpsy was turning around and paying us twelve hundred dollars a month. And they were taking care of their own utilities. But when we, when they were here a few months ago, daycare and Head Start pled the fee that they couldn't afford to pay their own utilities, so you deliberately decided to pay for them.
Were they going to start paying rent or? I mean, are they late? I guess that's what I'm asking. Are they delinquent, or we just don't have a lease with them right now?
We don't have a lease, and they are delinquent.
Well, if you don't have a lease, it should go on month by month from the existing amount, so they know they have.
It was discussed. I mean, you guys discussed that you was gonna leave their rent the same way until September, and we would reevaluate it because then that would be their budget time.
Of twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay. Let me, let me draft something that's similar to what you had. But are you saying it should be nine hundred dollars, or should it be?
I think we agreed to
Leave it whatever they were paying.
Leave it at four hundred for the year and then come back?
Nine hundred, right?
Nine hundred, yeah. They were, Bright Steps was supposed to pay the town nine hundred dollars a month.
Okay.
Until September, and then you guys were gonna reevaluate it.
Yeah.
They said they paid rent, and I said, well, I haven't received it, so I don't know where it's went. I don't know if they gave it, sent a check to curpsy. I don't know.
So I'll take a stab at that. And then you've got to draft social media ordinance that Ingrid said. That doesn't have to be active about tonight, but she's circulating it around.
Did you guys have a chance to read this today?
Yes.
Are you okay with it?
Yes.
Gary, you?
I'm okay, yep.
Someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Been moved. We have a second?
Second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
And that's, I think, all I have.
So are you guys signing the curpsy lease that Judge marked up or?
Uh, no, we'll get a clean copy. Here's a clean copy. Judge?
But they haven't seen this. I haven't talked to anybody about how I changed theirs.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's talk to them about it and get a, and get their signature on a copy and go from there.
Could, could you take a look at this, though, and see, because like I put that it started January first, and it sounds like? And I said it stayed at eleven hundred dollars for the first month, and then it went, because it said in February it was to go to fifteen hundred dollars.
That's what their lease said? Well, they, they paid February rent, and they also paid eleven hundred.
It's really, all I'm seeing is, it's really jacked up what their lease said. They, they made some mistakes on the dates, and they're just, and I couldn't decipher what they were trying to say.
Right.
Because it was at the end of the year and the beginning of the new year.
I, from what they communicated to me, they thought it was not right that they were writing their own lease. They thought the town should write the lease, and I told them, I said, at this point, they already told you just to pay the same rent that you've been paying, so we'll come a lease where you're not rushed and have it ready for our September meeting.
So this is the, the daycare now?
That's curpsy. That's Head Start.
Head Start, okay.
That Tiffany Stidstinger, I think's her name?
Take a look at that, and it, it needs to be modified right off the bat because I only have one month of eleven hundred dollars in there.
Well, did you get the fifteen hundred dollars from their lease that they sent us? So I'd leave that and see if they approve this, and then we gotta do the daycare lease.
So who do I, who do I, you can tell me who to send that to so I can start that conversation?
Yep.
Just shoot me an email, and I'll start the conversation.
Then we have the Bright Speed?
Oh, right, yeah, sorry. So Bright Speed, they all, the only change they requested was that I correct their name because they're Bright Speed of Indiana LLC. So otherwise, you've seen that exact thing.
Do we need a motion to adopt this ordinance? A resolution, agreement, I guess it is, for Bright Speed?
Yes.
Somebody want to make a, a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt.
It's been moved. We have a second?
Second.
Hall of Foes?
Aye.
Along and the short of it is you waived that building permit fee, and they've got to repair anything they tear up.
Anything else, Judge?
No, thank you.
We have a, David Hemminger says they have a water line froze or broke in the garage at three oh one West Union.
He takes three yellow.
Like a sewer adjustment. That water did not go down the sewer?
You are on vacation.
So that means I need to get mine.
Yep.
I'll make a motion. We give them a leak credit?
Second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
And then we have another one from Caitlin Williams. Three oh six west for South Benton Street. They think they have the leak fixed. This is where Tim Nelson lives. So has that all been fixed?
I believe so, yeah.
And that was out in the yard, so that didn't go down the sewer?
Yeah, it was ready to see grudge.
I know this has been an ongoing issue with them, but we've already did two leak adjustments. Do you want to do another one? Because I thought they had it fixed, and then it wasn't fixed.
Yeah, well, not only, not only do we, I mean, you guys do each one, but not only do we do that, we've spent a lot of town resources and time trying to help them for the future. We dug up at fourteen inch, for some reason, give them that fourteen inch mains put in at one point. And they're not in the match. Where we found them, I did not want to tap into a fourteen inch plastic main and cause main But we found them, and I did not want to tap into a fourteen inch plastic main and cause main transmission line problems down the road, so I told them I would not be relocating their metered bit, but that was...
That was an all-day project.
And it was months ago, and they've had to leak the whole time and just have to pull the trigger with the contractor or whatever the problem was.
Don't our ordinance say you can only have two a year or one a year or something serious?
One a year.
Yep.
It's typically one a year on your guys' set ordinance, but you guys can't approve more than one.
This is one where I think his wife just died or is about to die or...
Yeah.
And this is this year, too.
Yeah. I, I would be in favor of getting them another adjustment. I mean, it didn't go down the sewer.
Correct.
So we did not incur that expense.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We got a, an agreement here for the parks plan, and it's from the same company that we selected to do, but we'd have not signed an agreement with them, to do our comprehensive plan. They want forty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, which is almost the same amount that they're gonna be charging for the comprehensive plan. So I guess I'm willing to go back to them and say, hey, we haven't signed an agreement with you, you better knock that down by about ninety percent, or we're gonna, we're gonna open up those negotiations again.
Who is that?
U S I Consultants out of Indianapolis. Is that where you guys feel too?
I wouldn't pay that much money for it, for sure.
Especially based on what Ken just told us.
You know, out of the three companies that we talked to, the one that for the plan was the best, I don't remember, that was the lady that was from this area somewhere.
Yeah, which we probably have notes on who we talked to, so...
Yep.
I don't even think you pay that for a master plan for the plan.
Well, the grant's fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars, something like that, so they always charge...